Hello, Ma'akako and good afternoon. Mahalo for joining today's Joint AEN/ JDC Hearing. It's Monday, April 1st, 2024, and we're convened in Room 224 in video conferencing, which includes the audio and video of remote participants that's being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that the hearing is cut short, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on April 3rd at 1:00 p.m. here in Room 224 in AEN's time slot, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. And because of our 90-minute time limit on hearings, there'll be a two-minute time limit for all testifiers, and we'll have a virtual countdown timer right here in front on this computer. So we'll start off, we actually have one item on the joint agenda, SCR 164, SR 138, urging the Department of Agriculture to establish a two-year agricultural crime pilot project to examine and assess the effectiveness of prosecuting agricultural crime cases, including those of agricultural theft and agricultural vandalism in the state. First up is Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture. The Department stands on our submitted testimony but wishes to comment, as in the written testimony, that trespass perhaps could be involved, could be included, maybe not as a serious crime, but certainly as a count, so that they can, the public can know, the trespassers can know that it is being tracked, as that represented the greatest amount of crimes reported. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Sharon. Jared Rudula with the Department of Law Enforcement.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Chair Rhodes, Senator Decoit and Senator Richards. The Department of Law Enforcement is in support of this resolution, and to that end, we are willing to do our part in addressing these very serious agricultural crimes in Hawaii. In the wake of the informational session, I've sent my detectives to begin looking at some of the crimes that have occurred with the intent of trying to solve them as well. We have been in discussion with Chair Hurd and the Department of Agriculture on the other pieces of this resolution, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelton Welchin from the Hawaii County Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, in support, Nicole Galasey from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. In person, welcome, Nicole.
Flew over from Volcano to see you guys. I really appreciate you guys hearing this resolution. You guys saw the ag crimes work, info briefing. Thank you guys for holding that. That was a chance for us to show you how dire the situation is. Unfortunately, this issue is getting more rampant, really unfortunately, the situation is getting more dangerous. So we appreciate this resolution that has come up to really take a look at how can we make enforcement something that deters these ag crimes from happening, so that we can continue on actually producing food for everyone safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Brian Miyamoto. On behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau, I actually came in person today also, all the way from the Alamoana area.
We appreciate your show, how important this is.
Thank you, Chair, for hearing this resolution. Thank you for introducing. You heard the previous testifiers, so I won't talk about how bad this is for the industry. We do agree with Department of Agriculture that trespass should be included, all crimes, all agricultural crimes should be included, and also wanted to take this opportunity to commend the Department of Law Enforcement, who've really stepped up, especially since the briefing that you had held along with Chair Decoit. I think that was very effective, and we do see some momentum, some movement, to address a very serious crime, a very serious problem for agriculture. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you, Brian. Angela Melody Young from Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. And Raquel Achiu on Zoom.
Not present either on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, then the following are also in support, Brendan Balthezar, Alex Franco, Taylor Kellerman, Woody Child, Jill Matos, Kathleen Pahibuli, Jimmy Greenwell, Jacqueline Ambrose, Randy Cabral, Gregory Friel, Jay Ashman, Bud and Katie Gibson, Angela, Angelica Malone, Glenn Kagamida, also Lonnie Beetree. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members' questions. Senator Decoit.
Thank you. Department of Ag, please.
Senator.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, you know, the study in 2019, we know, the arrest counts, the convictions, what do you think we need to do differently if we establish a new pilot project in all four counties?
Have some teeth. Now with the Department of Law Enforcement on our side, there'll be visible accountability, and even the trespass, they'll know that there's eyes on them. I think the trespass will not be so cavalier, you know, like just passing through someone's property. I think the difference would be that we have law enforcement now to give it some teeth. The media's on it, I think you're on it, and I think this time we'll make a difference. Surveys made the point. It is a problem, and now, to Nicole's point, it's getting dangerous. So I think the difference is, the climate has changed, and it's time to do something.
So I want to definitely commend law enforcement. They are huge. Thank you guys for what you guys do. This past weekend, I got ripped off too.
Oh, really?
I got ripped off on Quadrunner. But I'm gonna tell you, the issues we're facing is that, one, you report it, right? And then if you also have your insurance on it, the impact to that farm or that ranch also skyrockets as well. You know, just like Nicole said earlier, it's really huge, and either we get on it or we start taking matters into our own hands. So I'm gonna thank you guys. I am happy that you're seeing that as well, but thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, follow-up. Senator?
Yeah, Director, you said have more teeth.
More teeth.
Define that.
The penalties will be enforced. Recently, the giant water truck was taken from a Noiser farm. Thanks to law enforcement and their partners, they located it. I mean, it was big, and they're still looking for the perpetrator. They're not just giving up the fact that they found it, so they're continuing to do it, kind of like even as a cold case, because after a few days. So the teeth is that we're not giving up. We're gonna go after them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Follow-up question?
Yes.
Law Enforcement?
I appreciate you being here, and I echo everything that's been said. You said we're willing to do our part. Define that.
Sure.
Do you have the authority to do it now, or do we have to do something about that?
Senator, we absolutely have the authority to do it now. Our law enforcement officers have police authority anywhere in the state to include the agricultural lands. We're not stymied by limiting statutes like some of the other agencies are.
Okay, and when you say "our" part, do you have that more articulated, or are you just willing to dive in and?
So we're willing to dive in. One of the key things that we're trying to do in terms of how the DLE operates is to try to reinvent the way we do law enforcement. One of those things, last year, the legislature generously gave us some funding for technology. We're now gonna take that technology, that new law enforcement technology, and bring it to agriculture. And I think that's where we're gonna make a difference. We can leverage technology to watch wider areas, to install things like license plate readers and those kinds of things that'll be able to, you know, catch people after hours. And so maybe if we're not physically there, our technology is and gives us a way to start investigations and try to identify the culprits.
Okay, and do you have the resources to deal with that now, or is that something we need to look at expanding?
So I think, I think we're okay right now. I think what we want to do is dive into this problem and see how quickly we can make a difference. Similar to some of the other law enforcement issues that we face as a community, this is somewhat like the pimple that needs to be popped, and we're here to pop it. And that's why. I mean, it's a problem that has existed for a while, but it really takes a dedicated team of people willing to take a full-time look at this, and not something where, you know, we're competing against all the other community and law enforcement problems. So we have detectives, my detectives right now are looking into some of the agriculture cases that have already been reported.
Okay, I appreciate that. You know, Senator Decoit talked about losing an ATV. I had a horse stolen, and so this is all nearing dear to us in agriculture, so thank you, Chair, I appreciate it.
So first of all, thank you for what you guys do. I know when you had the prior thefts, you guys are like right there, so I know you guys are doing your job. Does the counties that you folks, or will cover, does it also have coverage from Ola Koi and La Na'ia as well?
Yes.
Then on your technology and stuff, I've seen some of that technology, so I'd like to commend you guys on that as well. That technology is gonna help a lot. So mahalo, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Question for Brian Miyamoto from Farm Bureau. Brian, on the ETAEN info briefing that we had on February 29th, you had mentioned that there's often a language barrier between the farmers and law enforcement, and so do you think it would be beneficial to add an amendment to this reso requesting an interpreter be assigned to the, in the pilot program?
Thank you, Chair Brian Miyamoto, behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Yes, absolutely. In the past, when the Farm Bureau has worked on some ag theft, ag crime events, we partnered with Pacific Gateway, because we do have an immigrant farming community, a lot of the Southeast Asians. We also had Filipino interpreters, so we tried to cover as many languages as we could based on the communities that we were going into. So absolutely, to have those farmers comfortable, being able to communicate, and if there's anything written or produced, absolutely have those translated also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Members, it's okay, we can move to a decision. Okay, so, yeah, first of all, I would like to thank Senator Decoit for being the lead introducer on this reso, and just based on the testimony, and we did reach out to DLNR, Department of Ag, ADC, law enforcement, all the county police departments, the Farm Bureau, Farmers Union, just to get input on this. I don't know, there's a Kako thing, Laulima thing, I've got a feeling about this, that it's, everything's moving in the right direction, so I very much want to thank all of you for your participation, for getting involved, because I, so, yeah. So what I'd like to do is to recommend that we pass this with amendments, based on the feedback we got, we heard from so many of those folks I just mentioned. Would like to make a recommendation to pass with the following amendments. First of all, an amendment that specifies trespass as a category of ag crimes to be reported. Also, an amendment requesting the Department of Ag and the Department of Law Enforcement to coordinate and collaborate to form an ag crime unit. The third amendment is to request Department of Ag to create a Crime Stoppers Anonymous phone line specifically for ag crimes, for those who wish to report a crime but not be named. The fourth amendment is to request Department of Ag to create a more comprehensive, accessible online forum that makes it easier for farmers and ranchers to report ag crimes. The fifth amendment is that requests an interpreter to be a part of the Ag Crimes Task Force through the DOA that can be there for those farmers who may speak different languages. And also, I want to amend Page 3, Line 41, to have certified copies of this resolution be transmitted to the Agriculture and Livestock Commission, as was suggested by Senator Richards. Okay, so any discussion for AEN? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Chair, just for clarification, we're gonna do the resolution concurrent resolution at the same time?
Yes, we'll do them at the same time.
Okay, thank you. So on the Resolution 138, pass with amendments.
And SCR 164.
And SCR 164, pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor, and on the SCR 164, same sign?
Yes.
Hearing no changes. Chair, you have five in favor for SR 138 and SCR 164.
Thank you.
Chair's recommendation for JDC members is the same. Any questions or concerns? If not, I'll take the vote. I'll vote yes. Senator Gabbard?
Aye.
Senator Elafante?
Aye.
Senator Shane Bonuenscher is excused. Senator Awah?
Aye.
Recommendations are adopted.
Great, thank you all. And at Endurance, 1 o'clock, signing. Okay, hello, Ma'akako, and welcome to the 101 AEN Hearing here in Room 224. In the unlikely event, if we have to reschedule, it will be on April 3rd, Wednesday at 1:00 p.m. And because of our 90-minute time limit, we are limited to a one-minute time limit for all testifiers, and we'll start off, actually, there's only one on this agenda, and that is SCR 151, SR 129, requesting the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development to convene a working group to develop recommendations to expand blue carbon initiatives in the state. And first up is the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Monique Schaefer, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony, providing comments on this measure. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Caulfield from the Democratic Party of Hawaii.
Hello, I'm Chris Caulfield. I am the co-chair of the Democratic Party's Legislative Committee, which manages the party's legislative affairs. In full disclosure, I'm also an office manager in the House of Representatives, but I'm also, I'm burning up our vacation time to be with you today. We're also in very strong support of this. We think blue carbon is an innovative and extremely promising strategy for addressing climate resilience and carbon sequestration. For those who don't know, blue carbon is a term that's used to describe carbon that's sequestered in marine and coastal ecosystems. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration has research that shows that blue carbon can carry more than triple the rate of carbon storage of tropical rainforests, seven times the rate of storage in temperate forests, 10 times the rate of storage in grasslands. Internationally, we find that blue carbon projects are done in partnership, often with First Nations and indigenous people, which is one of the things that we find most exciting about that, fostering the rehabilitation and preservation of native wetlands and habitats and species. Often, those projects are spearheaded by indigenous people themselves, and so we're strongly in support of this, these resolutions as a way to move forward to cutting-edge, nature-based solution to address climate change. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Angela Melody Young on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
In support, Shanna Merrifield, also on Zoom in support. Oh, there she is.
Hi, yes, hello, Committee Chairs and Vice Chairs. My name is Shanna Merrifield, and I'm an analyst at the International Energy Agency supporting this resolution. The term "blue carbon" is for the storage and removal of CO2 by ocean and coastal ecosystems such as salt marshes, water marshes, mangroves, and seagrass. And notably, these coastal ecosystems can store two to four times more carbon and can sequester carbon at a rate up to 100 times faster than forestry systems, making it a much more efficient carbon sink. In a 2022 McKinsey report stated that if fully implemented, these blue carbon solutions can offer up to three gigatons of CO2 abatement per year, which is equivalent to about 7% of total current annual emissions. These blue carbon projects are rising in prominence and recognition worldwide, particularly in Asia-Pacific, in countries like Indonesia, Japan, Australia, and New Zealand, and there are many international organizations involved in blue carbon research and advocacy, including the International Partnership for Blue Carbon, UNEP, and the UN National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. The World Economic Forum estimates that the blue carbon market will have a 15-fold increase by 2050 worth an estimated $3 billion.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Jacqueline Ambrose is in support. Sherri Pollack has comments. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Danielle Basti, Sustainability Coordinator from the Office of Plan and Sustainable Development. Apologies for our late testimony, it's been distributed via hard copy. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development offers comments on this resolution, mainly, and we will stand on those comments, however, we do want to emphasize, for over the past six years, OPSD has consistently emphasized the importance of adequate staffing and funding for conducting essential climate research for the state. OPSD has engaged in addressing carbon sequestration matters since 2018 through the unfunded Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force. However, due to insufficient funding and staffing, OPSD continues to face challenges in meeting the requirements of the currently existing Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force and this proposed Blue Carbon Working Group. Without the sufficient staffing and funding, unfortunately, OPSD will be unable to comply with the mandates outlined in this resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you, Danielle. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Senator. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. For the record, Russell of APAC Hawaii. I do support this measure, and I think we should look into the measure, because as you know, there's a lot of carbon content with concerns regarding to the trade agreements that we have with, I know there's a hearing that we had last week about the European Union. Generally, we're concerned about the carbon content not being part of the trade agreement with the European Union, with the United States, so we cannot export a lot of the stuff to the European Union until we classify the trade agreement. So I clarify that we should go through the United States Trade Representative's Office, because I know they do, we have a trade agreement with the European Union, so that can administer all the carbon content, and they have to clarify with commodities in terms of cost of goods sold with the trade that we're gonna have, if we're gonna export a lot of these carbon content materials that we have, even with agriculture equipments that we have. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Russell. All right, Members, any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Senator Richards.
Yeah, I think that would be office planning.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you. You said unfunded positions. What is the number that you think it would take to address these, being able to accomplish this?
Thank you for the question. Back in 2018, when the Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force was established, and since then, the Office of Planning has been on record requesting one position to administer the Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force, as well as $200,000, money range of $150,000 to $200,000 to officiate that permanent climate task force for our state, and we believe that it will be a similar staffing requirement and funding, so this could be shared between the working group and the sequestration task force.
And is it possible to get started without that funding?
Not, I don't believe so, since we're still struggling fulfilling the mandates of the Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Members, we'll go into decision-making. Chair's recommendation will be to go ahead and pass as-is. Any discussion?
Chair, just real quick.
Yes.
I think the direction is right. I am concerned about funding, but I'm gonna support it anyway.
All right. So Chair's recommendation is to pass this out, as-is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
On the matter, SR 129 and SCR 151, would you join again, Chair?
Yes.
Passing unamended. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit is excused. Senator Rhodes and Senator Awah is excused. Chair, you have three in favor. Motion is adopted, and same sign for SCR 151?
Yes.
Hearing no differences. Chair, that is also adopted.
Yes, thank you, Members. And Darnell, are you there?
Yes, I am, Chair.
We can go right into the 101 DM, right?
Yep, you can just roll right in.
Roll right in, all right, thank you. So we have some decision-making on four, five items, starting off with SCR 69, SR 57, requesting the Department of Agriculture to establish a Sustainable Food Systems Working Group. Okay, so on SCR 69, yeah, what we're gonna do on this one is to defer this indefinitely. It's due to similarities between SCR 69, SR 57, and SCR 129 and SR 111. So what we're gonna be doing is incorporating the duplicative language from SCR 69 into SCR 129. So moving on to the next one is SCR 129, SR 111. And the Chair's recommendation on, this is requesting the Department of Ag to establish a Sustainable Food Systems Working Group to develop an inter-agency food systems plan, and the recommendation will be to pass with amendments to add a member to the working group from the Department of Health, one from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, OPSD, and also one, a member from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, as well as have the working group address, in addition to the items currently in the resolution, food waste, sustainable fisheries, food systems, resilience, disaster prep and response. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
In the matter of SR 111 and SCR 129, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Rhodes? Senator Awah and Decoit are excused. Chair, you have three in favor of both measures, they are adopted.
Thank you. Moving on, SCR 178 and SR 154, urging the state to prohibit the introduction of biocontrol agents that might threaten economically important forage grass species. The Chair's recommendation will be to pass as-is. Any discussion?
Hang on, Chair, trying to catch up. Okay, Chair, go ahead.
Chair's recommendation on SCR 178 and SR 154 is to pass as-is. Chair votes aye.
On the matters SR 154 and SCR 178, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Rhodes, Senator Decoit, and Awah are excused. Chair, you have three in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next is SCR 191 and SR 163, urging the Department of Ag to adopt proposed amendments to Chapter 4-72 Hawaii Administrative Rules that provide important authorities for the department to prevent the spread of insects, diseases, and other invasive pests within the state. And the recommendation of the Chair will be to pass as-is. Any discussion?
Second, Chair, catch up.
Chair's recommendations to pass as-is on SCR 191 and SR 163. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Rhodes, Senator Awah, and Decoit are excused. SR 163 and SCR 191 have been adopted.
Thank you. And finally, SCR 192 and SR 164, requesting the Office of the Auditor to conduct a performance audit of the Department of Agriculture's plant, industry, divisions. So the Chair's recommendation will be to pass with amendments, and we receive these from the Chair, introduced from Senator Keir Ho'kaloli, and start off with removing the following. Number one, remove, require... remove requesting the performance audit to include follow-ups to reports number 17-05 and numbers 20-21. Secondly, remove references to the Hawaii Interagency Biosecurity Plan and implementation status of action items in the Hawaii Interagency Biosecurity Plan. And third, to remove evaluation of true operational capacity of Department of Ag to achieve its action items established in the Hawaii Interagency Biosecurity Plan. And then also, we want to insert references to specific programs within the Department of Ag pursuant to statutory mandates within HRS, per the recommendations in the Office of the Auditor's testimony. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair. On SR164 and SCR192, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Decoit and Awah are excused. Chair, both motions have been adopted.
Thank you very much, and that concludes the 101 AEN agenda decision-making. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Calling to order the committees on higher education and agriculture and the environment. We have a joint hearing on SCR153. Let's see, is there a companion to that? And this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to any kind of difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss outstanding business on Tuesday, April 2nd at 3:00 p.m. in Conference Room 229, and a public notice will be posted on the website. There is a one-minute time limit for testifier, and even though today is April Fool's Day, these announcements are not in April Fool's nature. So, with that, we will start off with Senate Concurrent Resolution 153 requesting the University of Hawaii to conduct a study evaluating the feasibility of using mycop pesticides as a method of control. LFA? Okay.
Little fire ants.
Little fire ants. I know, than Wasmania auropuntata. Okay, testifying on this measure, Sharon Heard for the Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Sharon Heard, Department of Agriculture. We do stand on our submitted testimony, but pointing out that every branch of the plant and industry division is involved in this resolution. The comments would be that our pesticide branch currently handles the regulatory processes related to mycop pesticides, and our plant quarantine branch would regulate the importation of any microorganisms, including the fungi that might be used to control the little fire ant, and that our pest control branch may also provide technical review and assistance. So, all three branches are involved in this resolution. The last comment would be that the Wasmania auropuntata specifically utilizes fungi that has been explored by the USDA to minimal effect. So, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. We'll probably have questions later. Allison Sherwood, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chairs and Vice Chair and member. My name is actually Shaya Honavar. I am representing Allison Sherwood, Acting Dean for College of Natural Sciences with the university. We stand by our testimony as it's written, and I am available here for questions.
Thank you. Michelle Montgomery on Zoom.
Hello, thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
You sure can.
Excellent, thank you. I'm Michelle Montgomery. I am the manager of Hawaii Ant Lab. I, my written testimony was submitted along with the University of Hawaii, and I stand by that testimony. I am here for any further questions if you guys have them, once you read and understand my testimony, my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have others that have sent in written testimony. I'm not going to read their names of anyone else here. Brian, you're here to testify. Please come on up.
Thank you, Chairs, members of the committees. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony in support. We absolutely support this resolution, which would do a study, a study to see, to consider options to control little fire ants. I'm not going to go into how devastating this is to Hawaii's agriculture and to Hawaii's environment. We do appreciate that the resolution does include making sure that there is no negative impact to both agriculture and our ecosystems with the potential mycop pesticides. Again, we want to make sure that we consider all options to control little fire ants, but we also want to make sure that there aren't any negative impacts or negative consequences to these mycop pesticides. We believe the study does have language that would afford that. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Brian. Is anyone else wish to testify? Yes, please.
Aloha. Committee's Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Roar Rescue of Animal Rights. So, the focus of animal mitigation plans, strategies to manage feral pigs, invasive species, and chickens, and cats should always be humane. Right? So, with the little ants, ants are beneficial to biodiversity because they decrease the pest insect numbers, right? And then also, ants balance biodiversity with ecological balance of nature with the removal of predatory snakes. So, the ants will create a very natural harmony within the earth and the planet. So, biodiversity is a balance within the earth that is achieved when species work together to contribute to the overall well-being of the ecosystem. And we should study invasive species to mitigate, maybe not by eradication, perhaps considering building sanctuaries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify? If not, questions, members, we're open for questions.
Chair? Yeah. Ms. Honavar? So, have you actually been working on looking for biocontrol for fire ants? Did I gather that?
So, Michelle Montgomery is also on this call. So, some of the questions that you asked me, I'm going to defer to her. So, we're going to tag team it. And so, for biocontrol, Michelle, we do not have any biocontrol for ants, correct?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, she's on the call. All right, and so, specifically here, what have you been working on then? Is this something that's going to steer you in a direction?
So, the resolution as it's written, we, I personally have not worked with anyone on this resolution. And so, that's why the university suggested that we defer this resolution so we get a chance to speak to the people who have written this resolution. They are, I am aware that there are a lot of different mycop pesticides, I have a hard time pronouncing that word too, and there are only two of them that actually work on ants. However, both of those mycop pesticides are not currently in Hawaii, or we are not allowed to use them here. And that on one side. On the other side, I don't know how effective they're going to be. I don't know if they're going to be, we're going to be able to use it in the environment that we are in, and there is just a lot of unknown. So, I am extremely grateful for this resolution. I think it's a great step to move forward and look into these things. But my colleagues and myself would love to be able to have a chance to talk to the folks that have written this, to be able to discuss this further and see what can go into the resolution, specifically what work does need to be done, and plus the timeline. Because the timeline that is here right now, it's at the end of this year, and that's pretty quick.
Yeah.
And the way it's written, I am not 100% sure what is it exactly that needs to be done by that deadline? And so, that's why we thought that it would be great to have the conversation, just sit down and talk story about this.
Okay, thank you. And oftentimes, these resolutions are to do exactly that, trigger the conversation so we can figure out what we need to get done. Thank you for them, but thank you, Chair.
I want to follow up on that question. So, you said that it's not allowed here in the state of Hawaii. Is it the mycop pesticide that's not allowed?
I think, yes, so I don't think we can use that. It's not registered for use in Hawaii. So, when you use the--
Would you like me to?
Yes, please, Michelle. Thank you.
Would you like me to elaborate a little bit? So, mycop pesticides are basically biocontrol agents, right? These are, these are live cultures of fungi. Very few of these are actually broad spectrum, and so, they're not able to be, they're not usually formulated as commercial pesticides, right? There are two products that are commercially produced as a pesticide that have specific strains of, or not bacillus, oh, boveria bassiana, that will affect ants. Ants is very broad, but these are very specific strains, and the products with those specific strains are not registered for use in Hawaii. And so, that goes through a normal pesticide registration process that, that all pesticides go through, whether or not they are biological pesticides or conventional chemical pesticides. That would be in the realm of Hawaii Department of Agriculture to review those for safety and the potential for registration here.
So, would you be able to conduct a reasonable study based on the fact that it's not allowed here? Or how would that, how would you handle that?
The, so my, my interpretation of the wordage in the resolution is that we were, you guys were asking for there to be kind of an overall assessment. So, just kind of more like a literature review to see what's out there and potentially available to be used. So, that could, that could be done, but not within the timeframe of the resolution. I think the end of 2025 would be a more realistic timeframe to compile a literature review and to compile a list of products that you would, that would potentially be, should be used for further testing, and actual testing on insects or on the ants. The actual testing would take probably a couple of years.
What kind of costs are we talking about to do this?
Honestly, I don't know. That's, it's a big cost. We don't, also don't have, I don't think we have the type of biosafety facilities in Hawaii necessary for testing of fungal pathogens. I could be wrong on that. That would, I would have to defer for official statement on that to the Department of Agriculture.
Okay, there is no money attached to RASO as such. So, if there, even if the RASO did pass, would you folks be able to even do this?
It's just, and that's why--
I would say only the, as a literature review.
Right.
So, there'd be no cost for a literature review?
It will be the cost of just Michelle and myself and other people at the university doing the literature review. However, and that's why I think it's important to, to talk about this a little bit further to see what is that actually entail, that initial work.
Thank you. So, do you have any questions?
So, you'd be okay, well, you want more specificity in terms of what work is involved. I see that in your testimony, but as far as extending the timeline, the deadline with the 2026 session, in other words, having it ready by the end of 2025, that would be, you'd be in favor of the--
Only, only if there is more specific language in there of the expectations. I like to set us up for success.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going into recess. Decision-making. Order the Joint Committee on Higher Education and Agriculture and the Environment. The Chairs have conferred, you know, this measure maybe requires a little bit more details and thought through, so it might be a little premature based on the testimonies we received. So, both Chairs agree that we will defer this measure for now. Members, is there any discussion? If not, so ordered. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.